And we'll get started here as soon as he sits down. Audience and board, if you would, I keep working on trying to figure out ways to do work sessions and embed them in, so I decided to separate them physically on your piece of paper there. But we will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we've got members of the Mayor's Youth Council that are going to come up and pray for us and lead us in the pledge right now. So come on down, I want you to introduce yourself, please. For those, if anybody in the audience that's never been here before, we asked members of the Mayor's Youth Council to speak out loud. Sometimes that's not such an easy thing for people to do, but we're going to learn that as we go. And who's going to lead us in the prayer? You going to tell us who you are?
My name is Millie McKay, and bow your heads and please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us come together today, Lord. I pray for a safe and productive meeting this evening, and please allow us to continue to better our community, Lord. I pray that we can glorify you in everything we do, in your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Now I believe we have a drawing to take care of, right? All right. These young folks are always trying to make a dollar, and they do a lot of work for us. Stand right, dress, so they work with the Christmas parade, there's nothing they don't do at all. So don't worry about that phone. All right, so what are you here for?
The Maddox Backs concert.
Say it up, say it again.
Good evening, my name is Piper Burnett, I'm a junior at Brandon High School, this is my first year on Mayor's Youth Council. Recently, we have sold raffle tickets for five dollars for the Maddox Backs concert on November 1st. Money raised from the raffle will go directly to Mayor's Youth Council members in forms of scholarships and will continue to help Mayor's Youth Council programs. At this time, we will draw two names, and each winner will receive two tickets. Our first winner is Belinda Hall. Our second winner is Paige Ford.
Might want to get closer to that microphone, I know we don't like it.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Burke, I'm a junior at Brandon High School, and this is my first year on Mayor's Youth Council. The city of Brandon is excited to announce that the Mayor's Youth Council has officially voted on the 2025 Christmas parade theme, Selecting Santa's Workshop. This festive theme captures the magic of the North Pole for Santa and his else-prepared toys, treats, and holiday cheer, promising a parade filled with creativity, joy, and Christmas spirit. Thank you.
All right, not too early to think about Christmas. If you've been in Home Depot lately, you see all the decorations are out already. All right, we're going to back up and work through this, these three items we have to discuss tonight. First one, discussion to update and approve the City of Brandon Planning Commission duties, meetings, and conduct to reflect changes in municipal population, development, and growth being made within the city. So, board, I want to tell you that Joey and Mr. Baker have done a kind of a yeoman's job, you're going to get a copy of this in just a second. Just want to speak on a couple of highlights, we're going to seven board members instead of five. The idea is that you appoint one.
Good evening, sir.
Oh, I apologize, audience and board, Ms. Womack is not going to be here this evening, so I apologize about that. But we've grown, so you know, you need to have some input into that, and we began to look at the ordinance, and we make comparisons to state law, for instance, that the maximum they could be paid would be a hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars per DM per month. Joey and I have spent a lot of time working through this, and he created a copy of what you're going to get here in just a second. It's our feeling that they just ought to be compensated a hundred and twenty dollars per month, and we have mandatory meetings every month, because even if there's nothing for them to look at from a development point of view, there's always training to be done, and we need to expand their horizons as they work to help you. So that's going to be our goal going forward, that they will meet at least once a month, if they have to meet twice, so be it, if they have to meet three times, so be it. But we want to change that from fifty dollars a meeting to just, to just a hundred and twenty dollars a month to be done with it. So it's changes like that. I'll let Joey, Joey, you want to say anything else along these lines, of changes that you or Mr. Baker, we found in state law, that that's the maximum they could be compensated? So we can't do a hundred dollars per meeting, it's just a hundred and twenty a month right now, but I would suggest that we need to ask the legislature to change that. We're going, that's just an update, that law was probably written when? Do you remember off the top of your head? Years ago, and it's just nothing, nobody's ever raised that flag before to say, we need to update what we're doing a little bit, require a little bit more. Joey, you want to give them a copy of that? And so quite a bit of time has been put on that, a lot of red lines, Mark and Joey have gone back and forth, I read it over the last week, he and I sat down and made some additional changes, not asking you to vote on it or anything else, want to go slow here, we'd just like you to take that home, digest it, and we'll bring it back, we'll take any changes or perspective that you might have and include that in the next version, but our goal would be to get to one that we can bring back before you to adopt, and then the steps beyond that would be, it's got to be publicized in the paper twice, and then have a public hearing that we can embed in a, in a future board meeting, probably in December, and to make those changes. So if you're good with that, you know, like seeing a nod of the head or something, we'll keep working. If you're not happy with it, then we'll drop it, but I think it's time we update our planning commission, effort and their work. All right, second thing, the discussion of establishing priorities for improvements to public parks and public safety facilities, as requested, to move forward with the development of bid documents necessary to initiate funding of improvements during the FY26 year. So again, you know, sometimes I've learned you have to say things and say things and say things really before they're really grasped, but the whole idea is, I've tried to encourage the board to move on some of these things for three years now, and we either need to do something or we don't need to do something. So last board meeting, we said maybe we need to have a meeting and prioritize these. So that's kind of what I'd like you to do, because I can't just, some of these bid documents are booklets that might be several hundred pages long, so it takes quite a bit of effort and time, and we need to compensate people that build these technical documents. So I'm kind of all in, I'll go down the line here, but I've got Jamie Ware and Chris Trubisky in here, somewhere in the back, back there. Both y'all can walk up here and you can ask specific questions of the board, come on up here. Everybody in the room might not know who you are, but you know, for me, it's kind of all encompassing. So my feelings are that we need to go forward, we need to finish Shallow Park, we did about half of it the last time we did a Bondville. We did, we left two fields off at Corey Baseball, and, audience, that's just the way it works, we, for lack of a better description, we decided to build good facilities for our families and children, targeting U-12 and below. So that's the reason why we built the fields to the size they are and the locations they are, and that's worked really well. I can remember, board, Harry and Chris and Lou, remember this, we didn't have one skinned softball field for girls to play on when we began. And skinned one, and skinned five, and just wound up skinning them all out there, so girls will have an adequate place to play. We had, I had parents at that time coming to me going, the only place we can go in Jackson is down at Byram to get to a field where girls can play softball. We were way beyond that. But, so at Shallow Park, we tore down every concession stand and rebuilt those, and built two new on some new soccer fields, but we left off what I call four ball and five ball. And you might hear somebody out there griping a little bit and complaining that the facilities aren't good and they're unsafe and this kind of thing, well, I think they're safe, but they definitely need improving. So I'm going to go through this list right quick on parks, and if you've got any question of me, please ask, or we'll ask these guys. So we've had a lot of talk about pickleball, and we've got a lot of adults that play pickleball, presented a general idea without any plans to take the old splash pad, saying old for the simple reason we need to build a new one. Old one is about to die. This microphone dead, or that one? Where you go? All right, thank you. Old splash pad has, we finally got it paid for, and it's almost on death row, and I can just tell you, thing could not operate, so if we don't want to have an operational splash pad, and that's okay too, we just need the board to give us some marching directions on how to build a new one and go look at what we need to do to improve on what we've got out there. We would take the old one, since it's got restrooms in it, we could turn it in and tie it into the existing old tennis courts that are out there, they've got six pickleballs on it, and turn that into a nice pickleball place. So there's an, there's two ideas, the splash pad location is where you go into the baseball complex, where there's a spot of ground that has not been paved where the new big parking lot is at, and I'd say that's where a new splash pad facility needs to go. Back on this side of town, I've shown you some pictures of a tennis park, and I've long maintained that tennis down here, we could have an extremely nice tennis park down here. You could build three, six, nine, if you built nine, you'd be in the region of being able to host regional tournaments, national tournaments, good stuff, and then improve the other four that we have left down there. So that's a big stake, ranking first recognize that, they're willing to give us two hundred fifty thousand dollars toward the development of any tennis courts down here to add to what we have. Out at Corey Baseball, we spent the last ninety thousand dollars we had on two concession stands on each end, back when we built that facility, and we left two spots on each end to take a six field park to an eight field park of the same size, which would be a good thing. As you know, we've replaced, those fields get used so much that we've replaced the artificial turf on all those fields once. Batter's boxes have been worn out two times, I know. And then we've got Marquette Baseball, so when we stopped at U-12, we kind of did away with thirteen and above, so we don't have big fields for anybody to play on, and that's kind of been the general thought, we've been holding back on the Marquette Road property out there because you've got room. I believe, Chris, you came up with the first idea of putting six fields in there, and we squandered that down to five, and they said to do what we want to do with three hundred foot fences is really, we're comfortable with four because we use so much of that parking with amphitheater. So when you drive by out there, you see all the aggregate, and you see stuff that's just been laying there for almost three years. We don't know exactly where to put the storm drains in between the fields. Don't know, Matthew's in here, and Ollie and I were talking today, Matthew, about the distance of the sidewalk, you were trying, I think the general plan was to put it out at the edge of the right of way, and we need to get it up close to the road so we don't lose all those parking places. So, but we're kind of caught in a crux there of not knowing what to do out there until we pay somebody to develop those plans, if that's what we want to build. So that's, I think I got everything in there that is parks and facilities oriented, and then you shift over to police and fire. I'll be glad to take any of you on a tour, and I know Chief will, Chief will be glad to take any of you on a tour in the dispatch. That building, which we got, finally got paid for two years ago, was not built for IT. It was not built to be the dispatch center it is for a city half our size, and that technology just didn't exist with servers and this type of stuff, everything they've got to do. We needed to expand that, and Jamie's been very good to come up with a plan, we believe, Chief believes, he believes, and I believe, we've got an extremely large amount of wasted space in the middle of that building in the lobby that just goes to waste, that could be used. So he's got a plan to, to bring the court up, and then bring dispatch up, and turn all that place where the court keeps records into evidence and to a host of other things. So we've got a plan to do that, and that one looks like, Jamie, four million? Looks like about four million dollars to make those improvements? Those are pure guesses, you don't know until you bid, until you pay somebody to build a bid document, and you put it out for bid as to what it's going to cost. Fire stations, Jamie's been working diligently on that with Chief, we've had, we've changed plans, I think, three times since we started this process. So now we're down to, we really need to improve that Crossgate Station, it was, that was the place to put the ladder truck, ladder truck is to be delivered sometime next spring, Chief, is that about right? Got a date?
March.
March? So we'll have a big pretty new, two and a half million? Two and a quarter? One point three? No, no, well, we've already saved that much to put toward that truck, so we're going to finance a million. Right, so we got it half paid for with the nickels and dimes we've been saving along. He's changed his mind, and after reflection of the data centers and that type of stuff being built out here in Industrial Park, and the changing nature of all that by Home Depot, he believes the ladder truck is better placed out here on the Marquette Road. So we need to build that station, the Woodgate Station, for a two bay station, and change it to the day room and all that kind of stuff, I've seen great renderings that Jamie has, just ideas, there's ideas at this point until we get specific to documents. And then the same out at Marquette, the red doors look great, makes it look like a fire station, but it's still, the building still needs lipstick more than just red fire doors that roll up. So we've got two fire stations, a police station, and a multitude of park things, which I wouldn't say them all if I didn't think we needed them all. We're at a, audience, I think Brandon is at an inflection point, much like we were ten years ago when we took the step to build amphitheater and improve Shallow Park. I can remember being very queasy about spending that kind of money at Shallow Park, and then it dawned on me the day we threw the first pitch out there. That park had been there twenty-five years when we made, when we opened it that day. It's going to be there another twenty-five, it's going to be a park from now on, and really appreciate that. So, Chris, you got anything you want to say? Jamie, I wish y'all'd speak up on.
I, I think they're all products that greatly benefit the community, and we're happy to help out in any way we can. Stuff you need, you know, for kids and security and everything to go with it.
Yeah, I mean, like the mayor said, working more closely with both chiefs here and their needs, and really over the last three or four years with this, both police station and the fire stations, and mayor, like you said, police station was built ninety-two or ninety-three, and it was great at the time, but you know, that whole business has changed, just, especially after COVID, how they operate, how they do things, it just has, there's thirteen thousand roughly square feet in that, in that building, and a couple of years ago, we did a study of looking at building a new station, and when we went through a space planning exercise, we came up with about thirteen thousand square feet, and it dawned on me, I said, wait a minute, this is, you know, what's the deal here? So we went back and studied the existing plan and realized it's just, it's just so much wasted space, especially with the court systems and everything going electronic, it's just everything about, every department has just changed over time, and it's just antiquated, and you know, just could, it could be a lot more efficient, and that would be a lot cheaper than building a brand new one, for sure. That, that roughly four million dollar number that we've got, that, the only addition that would be, would be building an additional Sally Port that you could actually properly pull through and pull, you know, pull all the way through, you know, if you've been there, right now you're kind of back in, pulling like a garage and you can back out, you know, they just, they don't do it that way anymore. But, but two, you could, that's, that's probably the cheapest space you could build in a police station, it's really just this garage piece. So that would get the police station kind of modernized and where it needs to be, and quite honestly, where a lot of these guys come out of the academy, you know, it's, it's recruiting just like athletes, I mean, firemen too. Crossgate, if you hadn't been through there, you should stop in and have lunch with those guys, it's, those are rough conditions over there, it just, it's, it's tight, the plan there would be to take that existing space, and again, just build a two, two bay station next to it, and then kind of gut that existing building and make it the proper, you know, day rooms and bedrooms like those guys need. So we've worked closely with both guys, trying to be really efficient, stretch the dollars, not trying to do anything just over the top like we always do, you know, here, trying to be really resourceful with our, with our funds, but just, you know, personally, across, across the state, even the region that you see where we're really getting behind on those stations, police and fire, so, but it's just, you know, it's a matter of fact, it's just, I get it that there's so much money and prioritization and what we need to do, but I'm here and willing to help and continue to studies and look at other options as well.
Again, you don't know what it costs until you bid it, then you don't know what you can shave off of that to get it down to something that you would accept and want to move forward with to go find funding for it, if that's what you want to do. But it all starts with plans, with no plans, you don't have a starting point. So that's what I'm asking you to take a step on and prioritize those, and tell me, then we're off to the races to figure it out. The numbers that I've shown you were just like any other engineer, they're going to protect themselves, whatever plan they get, it doesn't matter if it's a water line, sewer line, fire station, does not matter, they're going to add fifteen to twenty percent of it or more just to protect their own name, just to make sure that those bids don't come in anywhere crazy, and I've seen that happen, not here, but I've seen it get so far out of the loop, it's happened in Sister Cities, to where you go, well, wait a minute, I thought you said it'd be about this, and it's much exaggerated over there. For me, y'all know me, there's no better time, no cheaper time to do it than right now, today. Never will be. So the longer we wait, just the more expensive it's going to get.
Mayor?
Y'all got any questions for these two guys?
No, I got a question for you, or statement. I believe we need to do every one of these things that you, that you mentioned today. What I'd like to see though, is maybe from Tracy, if you get a guesstimate, I understand that we don't know exactly what it is, how are we going to pay for it? Do we do it over, you know, a twenty year period, a ten year period, but that's just something, I think if you would give us that, it would help me be able to at least say, yeah, go with it.
I agree. I can't get you there until I have bid documents and put it out for bid, because then I can take that and go into the bond market and say, this is what it's going to cost, this is how you get there, and all that's a step along the way.
But I know with the pickleball, we're flushing that account, right?
Flushing the pickleball account?
Two percent.
No, you're way beyond flush.
That's what I'm talking about, so those are, to me, are automatic, the four ball and the five ball, all that's automatic, no, no reason to even not do that. We've got the money to do that.
Right.
And then as far as the police and fire, I mean, that's a necessity.
I look at that, both, I look at all three of those stations as a necessity.
So I'm saying, as far as I'm concerned, get, get tabs on every one of them.
But you are talking about two different places of where that funding would come from.
That's right.
One would be GO, general obligation money, because these are fixed facilities that are going to be with us for decades to come, and the other one is the two percent food and beverage tax that we're paying amphitheater out of. And audience, I know you don't track these numbers, and that's okay, but we're bringing in, that is bringing in more than twice of what the debt capacity is on the remainder of the debt on amphitheater. So when you say flush, that's what he means by flush. So it's coming in, it far exceeds anything could have ever, or you, you know, for those that have been on a journey, it far exceeds anything that I could have ever imagined. And so I'm an opponent of more begets more, if you want more, then when you do, do more. And it's not for everybody in the world, it's for us, it's for our families and our kids and how we grow this community, so that's kind of where I'm at, it all feeds all across the board. But, got to get bid documents, to get two bid documents, let me add another layer to that, you've got to say, tell these people, go to work, and I have to get board agenda items, and you're going to say, you're going to pay them to create those documents, and then we'll put them out for bid and come back to you with whatever those dollars are, and then you can slice off if you think something's too expensive or wrong or it's not right. Then we go to the bond market, figure that out. So the last time we took this big journey, I tried to do two things at the same time, simultaneously. We were over here getting bid documents, and I was over here going out into the bond market to get those things to come together at the same time, so that it was a short distance amount of time from here to here. Learned that the hard way on amphitheater, because that copper bid on just the wiring was good for twenty-four hours, that's all it was good for. So you kind of really have to make a timely investment of time and energy to reach that point. So I can research, dig, show you every nickel and dime of debt there is, and we can go from there, but it all begins with, if we want to know, we got to pay these people to create bid documents, that's it, the bottom line.
What's the cost for the bid documents? Just wondering.
Well, I brought that in here, and I said that, and everybody said, that's too much, we don't want to pay that. So that kind of says, I don't want to have the improvements. See, I can't do anything without the bid documents, I think on all the park stuff, help me out here, I can't remember the number.
I think it was nine hundred for?
Nine hundred thousand. Now how that works is, you take that money that you spend on that, and when you capitalize that, all of those improvements, you capitalize those plans in there as well, so it becomes part of that process over time. So it's not like it's a loss out of the system unless you choose not to do any of it, within that portion of it would be coming out of the general fund somewhere, or out of the two percent fund in this case.
Okay, so for bid documents, to get the bid documents drawn up, we're looking at about nine hundred thousand dollars, is that right?
That's for the parks.
Just for parks.
Fire and police?
I mean, it's, fire and police is a little different, because it's, you know, I feel like we've got three or four different options and versions, it just comes down to what our estimated construction cost is right now, or what your budget is, and it's a percentage of that, you know, it's sixty-seven percent, depending on engineers and other things.
So, let me.
But I can, I can get you the more precise number.
So if you said four for fire and four for police, and you added ten percent of that, B eight, so ten percent of that would be about what it would take to create the bid document for those three buildings. Is that fair? I don't mean to be unfair, I'm going high, ten percent.
And how long is this process?
How long does it take you to create, both of you, how long does it take to create bid documents?
You know, for me specifically, I'll have mechanical, electrical, structural, I've got a host of engineers under me, I would need to go to get a real answer, go back to them, but I would say realistically, four to six months to put up a hundred percent bid ready documents together.
Same for me, and some of the smaller ones move quicker, but.
That would include coming in at SD, DD, CD, presenting to you guys, showing you where we are, what our estimates are at that time. It's like the mayor said, at this point, we're, we're kind of guessing, and you know, think of it as kind of a really fat pencil, and we get, you know, more documents, more things put together, there's more information there to get better numbers, so at the end of it, that pencil gets sharper and sharper, so at the end of it, even our construction documents, hundreds of construction documents would have an estimate that we hope was in a few percentage of what the bid is, but you know, it's just a crazy market right now, and you know, we're usually, we're really pretty safe, as the mayor said, we build in contingencies so that we don't have a bid come in that exceeds procurement laws, and then we have a project that we can't bid, so you know, we, if we, if we take them all the way through CDs, we're usually within a two or three percent closeness of what those bids are. And so, you know, if we just took them to say fifty percent, you know, it's, we've got a lot of, still got a lot of guests back, it could swing, it could swing ten or twenty percent at that point.
So, say it's four to six months, you know, and if you wait another year, four to six months, you wait another year, then we're going to be right back where we were two years ago, when I'm going to have to look at you and say, no, you can't make that decision now because you're entering an election cycle, and you can't be doing that when you're entering an election cycle. So, the reason why I keep encouraging you to take an action, give me some direction here on how you want to go. Other thing I want to say is, there's a lot, you know, there's chitter chatter everywhere about what Sister Cities are doing, or this county's doing, all that kind of stuff, that's irrelevant to me, and I hope it's irrelevant to you. All I care about is Brandon, I care about quality in Brandon, and better for Brandon. I care about quality in Brandon and better for Brandon. So, that's it. I care less what any other cities do. I'm happy for them, whatever they want to do. All right? Any other questions for these?
Yeah, one more. Um, I missed, um, on the whole package for say, the parks, Parks and Rec, what was the figure on that one? I got bid documents at nine hundred thousand, but what were, what was just the general number that you were throwing out there for that?
I think for all, all five, I think it was eighteen to twenty million, in that range.
Okay.
And another reason why I like that, we're diversifying, so, which I think we need to do. Diversifying our footprint and the things we have to offer.
So altogether, it's about thirty million dollars.
I think I calculated twenty-six with their general numbers.
Yeah.
Last time I presented this to you.
That includes one point seven million for the bid documents.
Yeah, I'd say that's pretty close, eight hundred and nine hundred, somewhere in there. Unless you start slicing that down as to what you don't want to do, you know, then you slice off of that. Okay? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
All right. Last thing is to review the status of the zoning ordinance changes regarding a temporary moratorium of residential preliminary plat approvals incorporating and replacing the existing B T R moratorium. So, I want to send a shout out to Gray and Joey here, they've been doing a yeoman's job. I don't think Mark has seen this yet and that's okay, but you're going to be given a piece of paper that looks like this. This is the most recent version and it's still in flux, it's still working. It's not tonight that we said we were, our target was November the second to try to get done with that. And audience, I know you might be looking for some conversation on this tonight, but, uh, I believe we targeted November second, either the first or second board meeting in November to be able to complete this component of the development ordinance, was to have our new zoning map straightened out. So, Joey's got a copy of this for you. You going to hand that to him? There you go. And you can take this and begin to look at it and I just felt compelled to give you some feedback to say that there is work going on, has been work going on, goes on daily, seven days a week. And Joey would get a lot more done if Alex would leave him alone. So, I don't know, did the way to say that. So, let you scan that right quick. Each one of those are, if, not, not problem areas that you see circled there, what is it, one, two, three, five, six, seventeen, fourteen, fifteen areas, they're just trying to get the wording right, uh, the nuances and make sure that it's as close to a final document as we can get. So, I want to give you a copy of that and let you know that it's ongoing work all the time. I also want to tell you that, uh, we had five planning commissioners that, uh, and Jeremy went to that, uh, I hope you got a little bit out of that. It's kind of introductory, one-on-one to, uh, planning, a little bit of zoning and some other issues. You saw a lot of new people there, which is encouraging. Uh, Joey, I know you, I mean, uh, Jeremy, you've had a lot of instructional methodology like I have. I tell you what I got out of that, listening to Gray in the background, yeah, I'm going to try to get her to, to break that down, you know, the mind can't absorb any more than a butt can endure and it was just too much, right? So, I'm going to try to get her to break that down into, uh, probably forty-five minute sections and we'll do some in-service training with community development here to go through some of the same stuff again in a more relaxed setting instead of in a big room and invite you to come into that here, somewhere here for our people, totally our people. Uh, so, I'm trying to get to that point in time with, with Gray right now. All right, board, you got any other questions for me? Yes, sir.
Mayor, with regard to that, the, um, the action of the last meeting was to table it to tonight.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
With regard to the matter of the moratorium, the action of the last meeting was to table it to tonight.
Okay.
And so, there's some action has to happen tonight.
All right. Okay. Um, okay, well, we'll take care of that when we get to it in just a minute, all right? You called and asked to speak to the board tonight and we're going to recognize you to do that right now. Thank you for coming.
Yes, yes, thank you. And to, and to the board, uh, we were here last week, my brother, uh, Gaden Harrell and my sister Ruby, and, uh, I had just found out about the meeting that, that was planned concerning the moratorium of, on subdivision development. And so I requested, uh, a couple more weeks if possible and the board so graciously granted that and I thank each, each one of y'all for that. But, uh, we're, we're back tonight, not, not, uh, understanding whether there'd be a vote tonight, my understanding there would not be a vote tonight, but nevertheless, uh, since that time, uh, I have been able to retain, uh, Michael Bentley, who represents my brother Gaden and my sister Ruby and myself. And, uh, I, I did speak briefly last time, but, uh, with permission of the board, I would just like for him to speak for the three of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Uh, Mayor Lee, board members, it's an honor to be here tonight. My name is Michael Bentley, I'm an attorney, uh, that does zoning law, both representing cities and counties and also individuals, landowners and developers. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Mr. Harrell called me, uh, and mentioned to me the temporary moratorium that the city was considering. Um, and I spent a little time studying the city's comprehensive plan, um, and looking at the use of moratoriums. And I guess if we just take a couple of minutes, I would start, of course, with first principles and that is that the citizen's right to make lawful use of his property is one of the most sacred rights guaranteed by the Mississippi Constitution. The other first principle is that a moratorium, uh, particularly a year-long moratorium, is a blunt instrument, uh, that should be employed sparingly. It prevents the lawful use of the, the landowner's property, it deprives the landowner of even the opportunity to make beneficial uses of the property. Uh, and it certainly impacts both the landowner's rights and has ripple effects into the economy. In my view, and, uh, it's just mine, representing the Harrels, that's who I'm here for tonight, a year-long moratorium is not necessary to address what the city perceives as an issue with residential subdivisions. Um, and in fact, I do not think it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan that was just adopted recently by the city. The comprehensive plan, particularly section three, identifies the need to increase housing smartly, of course, to support economic development efforts in the city. That's part of the comprehensive plan tying properly, rightfully, residential opportunities to economic development. Of course, section six, which goes through the land use goals of the city, uh, is focused on encouraging residential development, uh, to support living in close proximity to working and leisure activities. So, everything in the comprehensive plan is focused on increasing, again, in a smart way, all variety of residential opportunities for people who want to live in Brandon, live near where they work and where they recreate. Um, the land use map, of course, identifies areas where different types of residential uses would be proper. So, the city has thought through all of this and that process. And in my view, a year-long moratorium sort of ignores all of that thoughtful work. The careful calibrating that went into the comprehensive plan is undone for a year-long pause on residential development contrary to what the comprehensive plan calls for. And the last thing I would say is obviously the city has other means to achieve its goals through the existing zoning ordinance, uh, ordinance that gives thoughtful consideration to individual subdivision proposals on their own merits. You can take them up individually, consider them without the blunt instrument of a moratorium. It's not a use that just pops up, it's a use that the city can take one by one and consider on individual merits. So, that's my views and I really appreciate Mr. Harrell inviting me to be here and certainly appreciate you, Mayor, and the Alderman hearing me out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will begin to work our way through the agenda. Uh, is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October sixth, twenty twenty-five and a special call board meeting minutes of October seventh? Motion by Ms. Jerry Crane, second by Mr. Lou Coker. Any question on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, under the mayor. Uh, I'll just read all four of these and see if we got any questions. Consideration to approve an invoice for professional services from Ashley Farms and Trucking, LLC, an amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for grinding wood waste on Marquette Road and authorized payment of the same. Board, that was all the dead trees we've been taking down around the city. From here on out, they are hauled to a landfill, which greatly increases the cost of disposal. Number two, consideration to approve travel to Jackson, Mississippi for city officials, that's any of you that would like to attend the twenty-twenty-six M M L midwinter meetings in January and authorized payment of conference fees. Number three, consideration to approve a professional services contract for catering the Veterans Day breakfast on November the eleventh, twenty twenty-five, uh, from Catered Occasions of Mississippi. By the way, audience, uh, this is going to be a very nice Veterans Day program. I would encourage everybody in the sound of my voice to be in attendance to this. Number four, consideration to approve a professional services contract for catering the Homeowners' Association annual meeting on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, from Catered Occasions of Mississippi. And, audience, we try to do an annual, uh, gathering of all homeowner associations just to try to inform them of what's going on around the city and to keep as many people informed as we can. And that's about the best way we could figure to do it and it's worked well for us the last couple of years. So, four items. Uh, board, is there a conversation or a motion to approve those four?
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. Any other conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Ms. Mary Ann?
Mayor, if I could, before Mary Ann starts?
Sure.
I've got some findings I will add to the minutes for both of those that we've done in the past for the H O A and for the Veterans Day breakfast that we need to include as to the reasons why, the Attorney General has those, that language that we've used in the past.
Sure.
And I'll include that with the board's permission, that'll be in the, that'll be on the minutes, okay?
Thank you. Please. Might want to pull that microphone down a little bit, please. There we go.
Good evening, everyone. May I take these together?
Please.
Number one, consideration to approve a professional service agreement for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill fifteen twenty-one and other lawful and related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures, the Rider Grange and City of Brandon Agreement. Number two, consideration to approve a professional services agreement with Simmons Landscape, LLC, for turf and planting bed weed control services at all. Brandon-owned, planting beds at the terms listed in the professional service agreement and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. This item is budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Number three, consideration to approve a professional services agreement with Simmons Landscape, LLC, for turf and planting bed weed control services at the Brandon Amphitheater at the terms listed in the professional service agreement and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. This item is budgeted in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Number four, consideration to approve the service agreement for Metro Building Services for HVAC equipment, it maintenance cost of forty thousand, zero, six, oh, with an option for coral, a second coral cleaning and sanitizing of twenty-seven, sixty, and a total service, annual service agreement cost of forty-two, eight, twenty, and authorizing the mayor to execute all related documents. A second quote was received from Environment Masters in the amount of forty-two, six, ten, and forty-five, eight, ninety-one respectively. Number five, consideration to approve the C M P D D District Assessment for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of ninety-four, ten, and authorize the payment for the same. Number six, consideration to approve payment to I work in the amount of ninety-four, thirty-nine, for the renewal of the permit management and citizen sought request software. Number seven, consideration to approve an amphitheater sponsorship agreement with Visit Mississippi for the twenty twenty-six concert season and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number eight, consideration to approve an insurance policy from the Mississippi Municipal Liability Plan for uninsured motors' coverage. Number nine, consideration to approve budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and authorize publication of the same. Number ten, request permission to hire Keith Wilson as facility maintenance specialist, effective October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, and set rate of pay according to the memo. Number eleven, consideration to approve the docket of claims for October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and the Fox Everett claims released on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Please. Mary Ann, I'm looking on the contract and I know it was last on, but the professional service number two, the, uh, it says all Brandon, whatever, I just want to make sure that the agreement talks about the, um, downtown Brandon, streetscape, old Brandon cemetery, city hall, Great Anials Boulevard, Mar- Maryland Drive and First Baptist Church. So, it's those five, right?
Right.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, clarify that for the minutes.
Okay.
Because we have more than five throughout the city, but we'll get to work on those down the road. Uh, Keith, I see you standing in the back of the room, stand up so the board can see you and give us a wave. Look forward to him coming on board, very nice young man, glad to have him, interested in working for the City of Brandon. All right, so we've got, uh, eleven items?
Seven.
Who said that?
Motion.
Motion by David, second by Jerry. I've got a motion, second, any questions on any of those items? A lot of them. Thank you, board, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. And, audience, we had two shows out there, thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. We had two shows out there Thursday and Saturday night and both were one hundred percent sellouts. And, uh, I think we had one medical problem on Thursday and that was about the summation of it, just two totally different crowds and represented the City of Brandon well. And in the middle of that was a football game, audience, that our police department and paramedics were at, just for an added layer of security. We took their equipment down there and used it accordingly, uh, for metal detectors, for an added layer of security for people to, so they'd feel better going in and, uh, I think I got a lot of feedback on that today, uh, that that was much appreciated and we will do that to the remainder of this year. Okay? So, appreciate you, chief and police department, doing that. How are you, sir?
Doing well.
You might want to get a little closer to that microphone.
Doing well, sir.
Yeah, yeah. I don't like it either. There you go. All right. Floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, uh, good evening, Mayor, board. Uh, I'd like to take these all together.
Yes, sir.
Uh, number one, consideration to declare an emergency, the electrical repairs to North Street Waterwell, uh, and approve, uh, invoice eight, four, nine, two, seven, six, in the amount of five thousand dollars from Bunch Electrical. Number two, consideration to approve pay request one in the amount of seventy thousand, seven hundred, forty-three dollars and eighty-four cents from Jose Sarah Construction, LLC, for the West Sunset, Sunset Drive Waterline Replacement Project. Number three, consideration to approve pay request four in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and five cents for Thornton Construction Company for the Grants Ferry Parkway Shared Use Path, L P A project. Number four, consideration to approve pay request four in the amount of five hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars from Griner Drilling Service for the Cornerstone Waterwell Project and authorized payment of the same. Number five, consideration to renew the bid of herbicide treatment of the city's right of ways, ditches, detention ponds and cemeteries with Kimpro Services for the twenty twenty-five season. Number six, consideration to renew the commodity Number six, consideration to renew the commodity bid for yard restoration sod installation with Murphy's Lawn and Lawn and Landscape for FY '26. Number seven, spread on the minutes, the receipt of payment and reimbursement in the amount of $10,930 from Geico Marine Insurance Company for the emergency repairs to the traffic signal on Highway 80 and Value Road due to a traffic accident. Number eight, permission to advertise for bid the following items as FY '26 commodity bids, chlorine and fluoride, road striping, concrete construction services, general construction services, CCTV services. And that's that.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here. All right, are there any questions on those eight items?
Mayor, I have a question on item number five for the herbicide treatment.
Yes.
It states cemeteries on here, but we just approved spraying cemeteries up here on, with Simmons Landscape. Are we duplicating services?
Cemeteries outside, around the fences.
Well, there's a quote for Old Brandon Cemetery under Simmons.
This, this is, I believe that's, their quote is just for the flower beds and landscaping, and our quote is for the entire cemetery to kill the, or rather, prevent the unwanted foliage, the weeds and other things of the entire cemetery.
That's a good catch-up. Thank you. I would say outside the cemetery, around the ditches and right of ways is where a lot of that would go. That's where the first one would go.
Right.
And I'm worried, I almost asked them to pull that, just to see, I want to review the map. Please, I'll put this on you. We need to get them a copy of the map. I've looked at a couple of places that I knew needed to be sprayed, and it weren't sprayed last time, they were added this year. And somebody on this board might see another one needs to be added, so we'll have to, but we need to get them a copy of that, please.
Absolutely. I'll forward everybody a PDF version of the map.
Okay. Appreciate that. All right, is there a motion to approve these eight items from Public Works?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thanks, sir. All right. Well, let's take, let's take the ones we don't have to spread out first, so which ones we want to take in group?
One, three, five, can you take them together, sir?
Okay, we'll do that right now.
Clean up and develop.
Okay.
Three, left, right? Yes, sir. One, three, and five together, right?
One, three, and five together.
All right, yes, sir. Number one, consideration to approve the purchase of 12025 Ford Maverick from Gray Daniels Ford in the amount of $28,861.15. There was another quote obtained from Mack Height Ford in the amount of $29,020. Item number three, consideration of a comprehensive plan, or signed plan, rather, for Gray Anials Lincoln, case number 25-035, located at 1731 West Government. And then, item number five, consideration of a comprehensive signed plan for Rebel Ace Hardware, which is case number 25-037, located at 204 East Government Street.
Thank you, Joey. All right, so one, three, and five. There are most to approve those three?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Chris Vincent. Questions? All good? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right, now we're going to take up number two.
Mr. Director, can you advise the Board as to whether all the prerequisites to the public hearing have been met?
They have, yes, sir.
And was the matter presented to the planning commission?
It was.
And what was the recommendation of the planning commission?
Recommend for changing.
So, I kind of got before the horse. This is a rezoning application of the Merle Jones East Estate at 344 Highway 468, seeking to rezone property from R12 to NC. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Did your office prepare a staff report in this matter?
We did.
Are you asking that the staff report, together with the attachments there, too, be appended to the minutes of this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Including the notice of the hearing and the whole nine yards?
All of the above, yes, sir.
Planning Commission action and all that. Can you generally describe for the audience the nature of the application?
Yeah, the request, as you mentioned, is to rezone that property. This is, the location's 344 Highway 468. The intent's to bring the parcel into alignment with the adjoining property to the west, which is already zoned NC and under contract for future development. This rezoning would allow this parcel to serve as the primary entrance to a larger commercial site, and that proposal is consistent with our 2025 land use plan.
Okay. And the recommendation of the planning, of the direct, of your department was?
It was to rezone it and to approve, yes.
Is the position of the, your department that this, the amendment is required of the official zoning map is necessary because of changing conditions within the city, new development patterns, or new development patterns, that that the amendment will more, will more suitably promote and protect the public health, safety, and welfare than the existing district boundaries, which said amendment would replace, and that a public need exists?
I would say so, yes, sir.
That's the position of the department?
Yes, sir, it is.
And it's approximately how big a parcel?
This parcel would be approximately, give me just a sec, sir, I have that here.
About an acre?
No, what, I have to get that to you.
I was under the impression it was just right at an acre.
Yes, it wasn't, it wasn't very large.
And I was under the impression that this parcel is actually surrounded by, cupped around with NC property.
That's, that is right.
That's correct? So, one could argue that there was a mistake in the original zoning as well, could they not?
I believe someone could make a case.
However, that issue hasn't been presented, so we're going to just go with the material change, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
This time, you've heard the general nature of the application. Is there anyone here desires to make any public comment with regard to the same? First, asking for those who desires to speak in favor of the proposed, excuse me, of the application. Is there anyone here desires to speak in favor of the application? We have the information from the applicant, correct?
Yes, sir.
During the period of publication and during, during the period before the planning commission, did you receive any comments from the public with regard to this application?
We have not.
Okay. Now, seeking those who desire to speak in opposition to the application, is there anyone here desires to speak in opposition to the application? Now, seeking those who desire to make any public comment with regard to the application, is there anyone here desires to make any public comment with regard to the application? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, ask the public hearing be closed.
All right, public hearing's closed. What's the rule of the Board?
And to adopt an ordinance to affect the same?
Sure.
Okay. Had a motion, who made the second? Second by Mr. Jerry Crane, motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by, comments, questions, Board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Joey. Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, so now we're going to take up number four.
That's right. Let me get to it. Mr. Director, we're here with regard to the matter of the cleanup of property located at 131 Meadow Lane Drive, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did your office prepare a memo with regard to this particular matter?
Yes, sir.
Are you asking that the memo with the attachments there, too, be appended to the minutes?
Yes, sir, I am.
Of this public hearing? And in accordance with 211911, was the property posted? Was the notice of this hearing mailed to the address of the property and to the address where the tax bills are sent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that notice you're asking be appended to the minutes as well, correct?
I am.
That notice was provided more than 14 days before today's public hearing, is that correct?
It was.
Okay. And can you generally describe for the Board the nature of the concerns that the department has with regard to the property at 131 Meadow Lane Drive?
Yes, this one's an ongoing issue, even as far as back, I have it in the, in the documents, the supplement documents, back in 2022. This is one of those that's already been through this process, cleaned up a little bit, but never really stayed on it. So, it's an ongoing issue. They've got weeds, vegetation violations, accumulation of garbage on the premises, or rubbish, and you have some exterior structure issues, right?
Okay. Well, you're, are you not proposing to tear anything down, though, right?
Not, not, not in this, not in this moment, no, sir.
Okay, so, so the matter of, can you generally describe for the, the Board the nature of the, of what you?
Yeah, I mean, and, yes, sir. And again, you have the pictures in there as well, you have, but the neighbors have reported continued overgrowth and evidence of rodents, snakes, and raccoons even.
Okay, so weeds, debris, shrubs, trees, stuff like that?
Yes, sir. And also the, the exterior of that structure, it looks pretty dilapidated, so.
All right, well, what are you proposing to do with the exterior? You've said that twice.
Yeah, well, as of right now, I just want to, I want to make it right, you know?
Okay, well, you can't paint.
Yeah, we can't, I know.
Okay.
It may, it may get to the point. I want to first get the, the yard and all cleaned up and get these violations that are causing the issues for the neighbors first. And if it becomes a situation where we can't get the exterior repaired by the owner, then I, we may propose to clear that.
Here's what I would suggest. Do the cleanup on the exterior of the yard, the whole nine yards that you've shown, and then you can come back and use the International Property Maintenance Code, and we can file charges against them in city court, okay? For the, we did that for a roof that wasn't done in, in Mr. Crane's ward, and we got the roof put on, and, and so we can do that, okay?
Okay.
And so I suggest we come at it that way as well, okay?
Noted, yes, sir.
All right. And can you tell the Board as to whether the conditions as reflected in the photographs currently exist and remain?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe so.
No, the answer to that is yes.
Yes, it is. Well, I want to make sure we did get.
All right, thank you. And are you, are you asking that the Board get, declare and determine that the property in its, in its current state of uncleanliness to be a menace to the public health and safety of the community?
I do, yes.
You're asking for permission to clean up consistent with the memo before the Board, is that correct?
That is correct.
And after cleanup, you'll then bring back the cost and assessments for a resolution with regard to the same?
That's correct, yeah.
Is the owner of the property or anybody here, anyone else here who desires to speak with regard to 131 Meadow Lane Drive? I see a hand up in the back.
Yes, sir. Come forward.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Johnson. And the address of the house is 131 Meadow Lane.
And you are the owner, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Oh, I've been down, I've been disabled, I went, had a stroke, blind in the eyes, and just been down, ain't able, weren't able to get around to doing anything, but I am back up and moving a little bit now, so I'll get out there and get it straight.
So, what does that mean?
I'll get it cleaned up.
Can you give the Board the benefit of a timeline?
Um, yeah, give me, say, about two weeks.
Okay. Now, you, you heard the Director of Community Development talk about that not only were there issues with regard to the yard and stuff, but there also appear to be structural issues with regards to the house, dilapidated, soffit, rotten soffit fascia, things such as this. You heard that, correct?
Yes, sir.
What is your plan with regard to that?
I'm going to work on that also.
What does that mean?
I'm going to try to get it cleaned up. I don't know if I'll have all that done in two weeks, but I will get the yard and stuff, so.
Okay. Because the recourse for the Director of Community Development in that regard is to go to city court and charge you with a violation of the International Property Maintenance Code, which carries a fine, and other things like that. And so, what they're really probably looking for is a comprehensive response to cleaning up all of the issues.
Yeah.
In a certain time.
I'm getting what I'm able to do, back to doing some stuff now.
Is this something you intend to do yourself, or is it something?
Most of it, yes.
And I'm not cross-examining, I just want to, they were going to ask these questions anyway, so I might as well ask them.
Yes, most of it, yes.
Yes? No contractors?
Uh, no.
Okay. With, okay, all right. And you live?
I'm sorry.
And you live where?
Crystal Spring.
Crystal Spring, okay.
Yeah. I just, I hadn't been able to drive, I mean, had a stroke in March, so.
I understand completely.
Yeah.
Question. Did he say that we had an issue with this house in the past?
We have.
And do you know when that was?
It was like 2022, June 27, 2022, to be exact. And then, I'll get to the case report, sir. And then it looks like again in May 25 of 2023.
Wait, you said June of 2022, May of 23?
Start back over, Joey.
Yes, sir. So, it initially started in June of 2022, and had a follow-up in July 18 of 2022. There was a, in, looks like, and then again in May, excuse me, let me start over, so back in 2022, so August 22 of 2022, there's a follow-up. The note says this has been taken care of as far as it can, again, before my time, so it looks like in May, May 25, 2023, there's a phone call, who they contacted the property owner. He said he would get up and take care of it, but he had a heart attack and has been recovering from it. It doesn't say who that was by name. And then we had an in-person meeting the same day, met with neighbor. And then, June 5, 2023, there's another in-person meeting where it looks like Brandon PD is now serving an arrest warrant. Mr. Johnson was choosing to pay his fines. After doing that, he stated that he would be back to finish cleaning up the property. And then we go and, still in 2023, June 6, we checked for an update. All fines have been satisfied at that point, so we're moving forward. And in June 9, 2023, there was a public hearing for cleanup that a staff member put, this was case number 230466. It looks like in September, September 18, 2023, it looks like a resolution was signed by the Board for the cost of cleanup. So, it looks like we've been through a 211911, it looks like it might have been subsection two, though, Mark.
As the grass cut and straight, under a hundred, under $250, $150, or whatever it was?
Yes, sir. It seems to be. And it looks like we had, of this year, we had September 18, 2025, there's a final notice given because the property has become a nuisance again, and the current neighbor claims that rats and vermin are being attracted to the property. The case has been opened since, handed off to a new staff, one of our current enforcement staff, in April. And then a courtesy notice was sent by regular mail, two weeks given for cleanup, if no activity, was notified that they will post for a public hearing. And then as of October 6, 2025, there has been no change to the property's condition. So, it was posted for public hearing on October 6. It's quite a, quite a history.
I just, I'd just like to say that I know one of the neighbors that lives here, and it's continuously been an ongoing issue for years. No attempt to try to clean it up, to get it straight. It's just been an ongoing issue, just like, just like you read.
Yes, sir.
So, then your preference is to take action to?
Mayor, first, I think we need to close the public hearing.
All right, no, thank you.
If they have any more questions, you, sir, they'll ask you. Right now, we're going to see if there's anyone else who desires to make public comment with regard to the same. Okay? So, anyone else here who desires to make any public comment with regard to the matter of the cleanup of the property at 131 Meadow Lane Drive? Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, ask the public hearing be closed.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Baker. All right, so public hearing's closed. Board, what's your, we have a notion here, we need to go ahead and clean it up, take care of it, get it back to an acceptable level?
I make a motion to declare a public nuisance.
To adopt the resolution, finding that the property in its current state of uncleanliness has to be a menace to the public health, safety, and community, and directing the cleanup of the same in accordance with the staff report presented by the Community Development Department, which is incorporated into the minutes of public hearing?
My motion.
All right.
A motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Luke Coker, further discussion, comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to make a motion and add something to the agenda concerning the moratorium?
Yeah, hang on just a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're fine, Joey, I want you to stay right there.
Yes, sir.
On the subject that we're, they're on here right now about cleaning up property, one of the lessons that I learned from the mayor of Tupelo, oddly enough, Mr. Baker, I would appreciate if you could give us some feedback on this, they worked a, an agreement out with the county, Lee County, and in Tupelo, when they take an action, a lispendous action, the county adds it to the tax bill, so when they pay their, they can't pay their tax bill unless they pay that off at the same time, which is a tremendous benefit, because then you're not tying up taxpayer money for an extended period of time.
That's right, that's what we do.
We tie it to the property, we tie it to the property.
We file it and deliver it.
So we don't have multiple years of lispendous waiting on somebody to recoup our money?
Well, we file it and deliver it to the tax collector.
All right, I'd like to follow up because...
We file it as in the judgment rolls, and however the statute says, you file it with the circuit in the judgment rolls, and then we deliver it to the tax collector.
I believe we have lost lispendous actions because something, something got sideways.
We also do file lispendous, and we have been called numerous times in closings and been paid.
Well, that's in closings of us, not at...
Well, but that beats the taxes.
Well, if it does, that's great, but if it doesn't, you know, I just want to double check at the end of the year or tax season, that we get our, the taxpayers get theirs back, I want, I just like to verify that we've got that, double check that, and we'll report back to the board, be sure we're on track with that.
No, I had a conversation with Caroline several months back, and she went through all of ours to make sure they were all on the tax, all being collected, all showing up as tax lien.
Okay, I was bored, then that means you can accelerate cleaning up properties if you've got that money coming back in, you're not out of anything. All right, so second thing I ask Joey, if you would, you stay here just for a minute, we've had some, we've got a gentleman trying to build a building in Brandon, Blake Spears, and I asked Joey just to give us some feedback right quick as to some of the hindrances to that particular location.
Uh, yeah, and I will say, I'm empathetic, that he submitted a, Mr. Blake submitted an application almost a year ago, he's been trying to get through it, so in his hesitation to say anything verbal, he wants everything in writing, it made things a little bit more difficult, but in that, I am trying, I have to follow the guidelines that the board has adopted, right, especially as it relates to the zoning ordinance, and so one of the concerns that he has in deciding if he wants to continue with the development, which, you know, investment in the city is always welcome, right, as long as it meets the goals of both parties, but one of the requirements of this development review before we brought it before the board for consideration was sidewalks for this new development, this is off East Mark, he believes that, being that it's an industrial area, he feels it may be a little excessive, which I tried to explain, that, you know, that is the zoning ordinance, and so there may be a path via variance, which then would extend this process a whole lot longer, assuming that this development would even be approved by you guys, because as I explained to him, also our development ordinance allows your construction, your building permit review is in tandem with your development review while it's pending, but in this case, there's a case where the board has denied a similar development because it was backing up, he has, he's proposing bay doors, he's got a lay-down yard, albeit he suggests that it's going to be nice, right, but still a lay-down yard that's enclosed by a cyclone fence that's backing up to I-20, something similar, I believe it was off Highway 471, again, before my time, it was a very visible area, therefore it was denied on that basis, and so since he has a very similar layout, although I have to admit that it's, while it's backing up to I-20, it's very hard to see, I requested that we get a point-of-view rendering from that point for the board to see and consider, to see if this is something that would be okay. He rezoned it recently, it was in September, I believe it was the 15th, they had a public hearing to rezone it to an I-1, again, this delayed, in his mind, delayed him a little further, but it was for good intent, so we all had a development review meeting, we had quite a few people in there, including himself, his father, and a few other staff members from the city, and it was determined that because on his floor plan that he submitted initially, he had future use, well, he had future tenant spaces, but didn't know what they were going to be, it was bay door areas, and so I was concerned because the way it was currently zoned at that time wouldn't allow certain things like plumbing or electrical or professional services, it really limited him to who he could market that to, and so for one, I thought it would be helpful for him as a business owner, or building owner, rather, to be able to market those suites for more than just specific criteria, and two, if he ever decided to sell that, the city would have to, you know, I feel, don't want to be left with a building that they can't market and have a vacant structure, right, that we may have to deal with in the future, so it just seemed to make sense, and as history shows, he seemed to agree that rezoning to I-1 made sense. Because of all that, going through planning commission, getting the recommendation, then consideration by the board, it took time, and so now he has a development review, and I understand his frustration, but that's, from my understanding, that's his holdup, I think he had, his thought was, since it's an industrial area, and, you know, that's certainly an opinion on the street that you could, I could see that, but I am basing it off of what the board has adopted in the zoning ordinance, and nothing further.
What was it, Chris?
I believe it was CC, but I need to look back and confirm that, Chris, but I believe it was CC.
Okay, just had a couple of questions on that, and I thought it'd be best to get it out of the horses, now. Two things left for Revel Ace Hardware, anybody cares to attend, if you want to write it down, Thursday, November 6 at 10:00 a.m., they will have their ribbon cutting downtown, they actually open for business today, and they'll get things spun out, but Thursday, November 6, and then the last thing, Chris, is discussion of the moratorium, it's on my list, so.
Can I go back to the question?
Sure.
So Joey, where do we stand right now then on this building?
As far as...
I mean, I'm going to say this, a year's a long time.
I agree.
To try to get something done in the city.
Yes, sir.
So, well, where do we stand today?
Today, he's going through his development review, he's received all his comments, I have went out of my way to call his engineering firm, and also Mr. Weir, who's helping with some renderings for him, both seem to understand that I was trying to help them, because I believe this is his first development, I don't mean to lie, but it was my understanding, he's done building permit permitting before, but never the full development. To answer your question, Harry, it truly depends on how fast he can get responses that are satisfactory to those comments, however, I can't stop due process if he wants to come before you guys and y'all review it, and you determine a vote another way, assuming that you guys do approve this development the way it's structured, he's got a building permit application that needs to be submitted, which he's already submitted, so if everything is okay with the development view, go pretty quick, it just, it really depends on the responses, and then the satisfaction of the board, but I will say, the zoning ordinance is clear there, so if he does have to go back through a variance process and he decides that he doesn't want to, typically a variance has to go back before the planning commission, which does delay it further, Harry.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're to, numbers, you stay there, we're to discussion of the moratorium. Mr. Baker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at the meeting last, the matter of the discussion of the moratorium was paid today, and so, one action today must be, at this, to get a free district, there was a resolution that was adopted that said, hey, we're thinking about adopting a moratorium, and so we put a stop on things pending, then having a public hearing, and then taking action with regard to adopting an ordinance for the, for the moratorium, which the board has not done, detailed consideration about ordinance or an ordinance, and failed to adopt. And so, it is now time for you to take some action, whether that's...
So, action would be, go forward, stop, pause, one of those three things.
Rescind the resolution that was adopted previously, and then it's done, payable again, survey the survey.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind our action.
So, motion to rescind the resolution that was previously adopted, I forget the date, but it was sometime, obviously, I believe there's some other ways that we can, we're trying to get to, okay, got it?
All right. Then form of motion, right? Okay, you got a form to rescind, is there a second to that? Sure.
Are there, what way might they be, be sure that the, the city can still progress in the following...
I went through some of those last time, if you're talking about stormwater control, we've got a contract with Wagner, they're doing a citywide thing, not quite ready to show that, that citywide thing should be done come January, however, if it's specifically on a piece of property, 10, 20, 50 acres, then you could require as part of that preliminary plat approval, a stormwater analysis of that particular piece of property, rather than doing something that's citywide.
I'm sorry, that's a poor job, but what I'm asking is, is there very little knowledge of it, really, but is there some way that this, that they can be in agreements that is tied in certain dates for each and every project that's coming along? You don't really have anything in your willing to that, but, maybe, did you see?
No, sir, not yet, currently, and I think an agreement would have to be, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but voluntarily agreed upon, right, so.
Well, I mean, I don't know that we have anything directly on that, but if you're talking about a subdivision, they don't, we don't really have that in order. Now, that's something that, you know, I mean, obviously, we're working for that, we are working for that.
Just like the example I gave you on zoning, so, you know, that's a part of the development ordinance, a huge part of the development, so I've given you the progress that they've made to date, and the targets of when they think they're going to be through with it, so that's a component of that discussion, of being, have that in finality, so I would say that anybody that brings anything that matches what your intent is to go forward, I think you should consider that, if, you know, does that make sense? Not to match the old, but to match the intent of what you've got coming forward.
I would like to put this way, it'll help to review processes immensely if they're in progress, because we've talked to zero when we're reviewing everything, and it takes time, we've heard that Mr. Spears takes years, and so, generally, development events tend to be accelerated processes, because then you can get through the conclusion process you're going to have.
And board, it's not Joey's fault, it's situational, I've said this before, no, I've said this, I'm going to give you another example, design standards, to where one house looks like the house right beside it, and that type thing, you know, we spent quite a bit of money and time and effort to generate, and you all looked at that and accepted it, design standards for houses, but that really hasn't, that process hasn't worked its way through the community development, the planning commission, rather, so, you know, there's just, there are elements of situational things that we've been caught up in, that are really no one's fault individually. All right, any further discussion?
I think for the past couple of weeks, we've somewhat put Joey and company through the wringer, trying to clear up ordinances and things that we were pushing them towards, how about that, and we have a fairly short timeline, another couple of weeks or another month or so, seems to be prudent if that will help us go for in the future, I'd rather take a couple of weeks or a month, or however long it's going to take to get it right first, and then move forward with that, so I'm thinking just a tabling of the, tabling of the subject will probably get us to where we need to go.
Okay, first thing is you've got a motion on the table, Mayor, and if there's a second to that motion, then that motion will be up for vote, if there's not a second to that motion, that motion dies, if the gentleman is asking for a motion, a superseding motion, a motion to table with regard to the motion to rescind the resolution...
Your microphone is not on.
I don't think it's a superseding...
Your microphone is not on.
I don't think that's a superseding motion, we just have to see...
That's right. All right.
I second Mr. David Farris.
Okay, all right, so we've got a motion, let me get in the right spot here. Okay, so we got a motion to rescind by Mr. Luke Coker, and a second by Mr. Harry Williams. Now, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I got Coker, Williams, anybody else? All opposed, like sign?
Nay.
All right, show of hands, then, please. We got, what'd you, you're four? You're rescind.
Oh, you're rescind, okay, so that's Crane, so it's, I didn't catch that vote, I'm sorry, so let me make sure, 3-3? Got it, Coker, Williams, Crane, Ferris, Vincent, Mayor?
Yes, sir, okay, I'm gonna have to vote to rescind, and I have confidence in what Gray is doing, what Bob Barber's doing, and I'm putting a lot of confidence in Joey, and I believe he's the right guy to get it done as quickly as possible, and Joey, you might have to call two or three planning commission meetings ASAP, because they need to be fully versed in design standards, where we are on the zoning map, I mean, I don't care if you have to call, have four meetings in a month, you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you, board. All right, Joey, you got anything else? Would you like to sit down?
It's up to you.
Chief?
Voter rescind. Good evening, I have two items, can I take them together?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, the first one is, request permission to accept $1,170.59 from the U.S. Department of Justice, equitable share forfeiture, and deposit those funds into the drug seizure account. Number two is, consideration to prove the following quotes as the lowest and best received for outfitting the new vehicles and authorized payment of the same, comm. south for the purchase of radios in the amount of $21,720.14, which will be reimbursed for using missed wind funds, Lakeland glass and tent for striping the vehicles in the amount of $9,500, Rix Protruck for outfitting the vehicles in the amount of $26,283, and Rix Protruck for the purchase and installation of a K-9 kennel for the vehicle in the amount of $4,603.
Thank you, chief. There are motions to approve those two items, and please... I'll make a motion. Motion by Mr. Jeremy King, second by Mr. David Ferris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Nothing from the fire chief. Like to entertain a motion to discern the ability to be in executive session, motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Mr. Harry Williams, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board. All right, audience, if you would, give us a few minutes, should be just a second, we'll be right out of here.